Good evening. My name is Renee Lafayette and I'm the moderator. Before we begin this special town meeting, a couple of housekeeping points to share with you. And I understand that there are still approximately 25 to 30 people in line, so we'll try and accommodate them, obviously. Tonight's meeting will be videotaped and will be posted subsequently on YouTube. Let me go over the procedure. If you want to speak to a warrant, article, or motion, please raise your hand when recognized. Please come forward. The microphone will be replaced here in this middle aisle. Step up to the microphone, and this is the format that you'll use. Thank you, Mr. Moderator or Mr. Moderator. My name is, and here, please state your first and your last name and your home address. And please do this clearly for the record that the town clerk will be preparing. Okay? I will invite you to proceed, and then you go ahead and do so. Do not ask direct questions. Instead, address your questions to the chair, and then the question will be directed to the appropriate party who will answer it. Okay? The counters for tonight's meeting will be Bella Caldera and Mark Kresge, and thank you for your service this evening. Catherine Klein, Attorney Catherine Klein, is town council here this evening as well, and welcome, councillor, to Hubbardston. And what is a typical special town meeting? Okay. Please take this moment, ladies and gentlemen. And Captain, step forward, please. Step forward. Please join with me in recognizing the 30th anniversary of service of Chief Hayes. Chief, please stand. Sorry about the embarrassment, Captain, but it's all part of the job. Chief, job well done. Thank you very much for your service. Captain, the same. Thank you for your service on behalf of the town. There are a couple of procedural points that are going to be different than the normal practice that we're going to be using tonight. The Public Safety Building Committee is seated here in the first row, and Chief Kucher and Chief Hayes have been invited to join the committee on the town meeting floor. Chairs have been provided for them. So it's a technical point, but just to let you know that they are here because they are not town residents, that has to be specified for the record. And it is. After the warrant has been moved and seconded, information is going to be provided in a specific order. As members of the Public Safety Building Committee are recognized to speak, after giving, you'll be going up, ladies and gentlemen, to this podium here, to the chairs right. After giving your first and last name and home address and asked to proceed, you're going to be breaking with tradition, and you're actually going to be facing the audience. You'll be facing the voters. And this is not intended to be considered creating a precedent or past practice for future ATMs or STMs. It is at the chair's discretion. Those of you who are not seated on the floor, when a vote is called, the chair is going to ask you to please move onto the floor physically and either stand in this section here or that section, because the counters are going to be counting people based on these two sections, okay? So again, when it's time for a vote, you'll know when that happens, and that's what we would like you to do, and just stay there until the vote is announced, okay? It should not be long. In weighing the need for information to be presented by the Public Safety Building Committee and the fundamental right of residents to discuss warrant articles, motions to limit or end debate will not be entertained until questions have been answered. Under the authority of the parliamentary authority used by the town, cited in the Hubbardston Town Bylaws, Chapter 2, Town Meetings, that being Town Meeting Time, a Handbook of Parliamentary Law, 2001 Edition, in view of the moderator's power to regulate the proceedings, it seems clear that he or she has the power to impose limits on debate of his or her own accord without waiting for a motion. Moderators may do this at the start of debate. What does this mean? For this special meeting purposes, each person will be recognized for a period not to exceed 10 minutes. Now, I know, you're looking around and you're saying, oh my gosh, we'll be here until Sunday. That's not the point. Obviously, we want you to get information first. Your questions may well be answered, but if you have a question that has not been posed, you should have the opportunity to raise that question. That's what town meeting is supposed to be all about. Do we agree? Yes? Okay. All right. Tonight's warrant contains two articles that are of considerable interest. When a vote on Article 1 is called, whose quantum is 2/3, the chair will direct the counters to first count all voters present. Then, as called by the chair, the counters will count those in favor of the article, then those opposed to the article, and report the results to the moderator, who will then announce the results. Okay? So we're going to have essentially two counts. The first one is just to find out at that point in time how many people are physically here, for the sake of transparency, and then, secondly, it will be how many in favor, how many opposed. Are there any questions so far? Sounds good. The chair declares the special town meeting in order. There are 347 residents present for a quorum. Ladies and gentlemen, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Gentlemen, please remove your hats. If you are a veteran, in that case, you may keep your hat on and render the hand salute throughout the pledge. That's the only exception, okay? Hand salute, please, okay? At this point. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. The first warrant article. I move that the town vote to authorize the Select Board to acquire by gift, purchase or eminent domain a parcel of land, with any improvements thereon located at 48 Gardner Road, Hubbardston, containing 5.397 acres more or less, being tax map 05C-060 and tax map 05C-122, and being the property described in a deed recorded with the Worcester South District Registry of Deeds in Book 48509. So that's 48509, page 23, for general municipal purposes, including but not limiting to public safety purposes, and to accept a deed for said property and further to transfer, raise, and appropriate and/or borrow the sum of $1,517,000 to fund said acquisition and the cost of making improvements to said property, including but not limited to the roof and siding of the building thereat, and further to authorize the Select Board to enter into all agreements and execute on behalf of the town any and all instruments as may be necessary or convenient to carry out the purposes of this article. Motion made by Mr. Williams, seconded by Mr. Perrigo. At this point, ladies and gentlemen, the Public Safety Committee is going to be making their presentations, and the first presentation is Mr. Williams for the Select Board.
Jeff Williams, 98, Old Princeton Road, Chairman of the Select Board. All I can say is, wow. This is the largest group I've ever been in front of since I've been in Hubbardston. So I welcome you. I thank you for coming. We appreciate it. Regardless of which side of the question you're on, it's a great turnout. One thing I would like to ask, which I usually do at the beginning of any meeting that we're running, is to respectfully ask everybody to respect the people who are speaking, as well as those of you who will be speaking later or have questions. We would like to respect you in the same manner. So with that, if there's any heckling, it'll probably be from my 18-year-old son sitting in front of me, ready to take his first vote. So I'm here to give some background as to why we are here tonight, and then it will be followed up by the other members of the committee. We are here for Phase 1 of a three-phase project, which is, in essence, we're here to buy a building, driving down Route 68, 48 Gardner Road, also known as Breezy Hill. And how this came about is, I don't know if it's been four or five weeks, it's been so fast. Bob Hayes heard that the building had been put up for auction. He passed the information back to Nate, the town administrator. At that time, we were not in the real estate market, but when this fell in our lap, so to speak, we felt we just could not pass on this. We just, so that's how the wheels have turned so fast because of the threat of it going to an auction bid, which I'll address later. So the Select Board, in our capacity as the executive branch, we have the duties and the power to enter into a contract situation when it involves real estate and so forth. And we have, we have a purchase and sale agreement. The rest falls on you folks. You are the legislative branch of our town, and you will be voting for Phase 1 only, and determining whether or not we can go ahead with this particular project. Excuse me. On this building, there is no immediate, now I repeat, there is no immediate tax impact on any of you. The price of the building is $700,000, and the cost is covered by savings and tenant, excuse me, tenant lease rental payments. That is how the payment is set up. Now, how did we get here? About 23 years ago, my wife and I and our family, we built a home here and moved to About six years after that, a friend of mine by the name of Todd said, you want to be a selectman. I'd never thought of it, but it was a key moment in our government because we were going from three selectmen to five. And he kept pushing me, and the result was that I ran, and I'm now in the beginning of my 12th year, so that that's how I got to be where I am. But the point I'm trying to make is, even then, 23 years ago and 12 years ago, the problems we have with our buildings were having then, so it continues. Now, the conditions of all of our municipal buildings have not improved. It was very clear, my first year on the Select Board, we had a committee that was formed having to do with all municipal buildings and the conditions thereof, and it was very, very clear that we needed to do something, and that was 12 years ago. The problem of our buildings has been decades of neglect, the ages of the buildings that are constantly requiring repair and/or replacements. Thanks to the seniors and council and the agent and Claudia Provincial, as well as Senator Steve Brewer, some of you may remember, they were able to acquire $500,000 to the town to buy the land that we would be building on. And we went ahead because we were trying, at that time, we tried not just once, but twice, for a new project to be passed, and each case, we were voted down. No new buildings, that was the message we were getting, and we heard it loud and clear. So we had to think about some other options and choices, and they were dismissed rather quickly, and you might say, why? Because of the cost, if you will, the lack of space in the buildings that we were looking at, and simply, it didn't solve our problems. The repair presentations for the buildings, we have, basically going from good to bad to better, if you will. Why not one of our buildings is being used? The reason, not one of our municipal buildings is being used as it was originally designed for. And that's an important point to be thinking about. The library, for example, as many of you may know, has town offices in the basement, and I might add, it also had the police station at one time. The building deficiencies. Let's start with the Slade Building. The Slade Building was built as a temporary classroom, not for a senior center, not for town offices, and certainly not for a police station. The fire stations, 1 and 2. Excuse me. Downtown Station was built in 1960. It's too small for the equipment that we have today. It was basically, it's just a barn, as in the sense both of them were. For example, if we need a new fire engine, it has to be made, custom-made for us, just so it can fit in the barn. And I tell you, that's expensive, when you custom-make a fire engine. And that is only one of the many deficiencies, not only in Downtown Station, but in the others, and we'll be talking about that later. The Clark Library. When Jonas Clark left the library to the town, it was a stipulation that he indicated that it has to be used not just once, but always as a library. And of course, we have town offices in the basement, and he did not want that. The library is a historical building, which is in need of repair right now. The foundation needs shoring up. Estimated cost for that is $150,000. There are grants available for historical buildings, but we are not eligible for any of them so long as town offices remain in the library. We're hoping, if things go on the way we would like to see it, that that will open up a lot of grants that could then possibly help take away the cost. But as long as we're there, it is not being solely used as a library, so we are missing out on a lot of this. So where do we go from here? Well, I just mentioned when we started, Breezy Hill. We weren't looking for anything, but it seemed to just come out of the sky, an opportunity that we, quite frankly, could not afford to pass on, for all the reasons that are going to be spoken. The building needs work, yes, it does, but it has the space for all of our needs, and then some. If you have ever had occasion to go in there over the years, and if you ever get up into the second floor, there's just space to build rooms and rooms. So it would allow us to have fire, police, town offices, all in one space. And one of the things in regards to that's inviting is, for example, the septic and the well, they're almost new, and they're already there in place. There's ample parking, and again, the police, municipal, and fire will be all in one place. We could not risk letting the building go to auction. Why? Because at the time when we were making the pitch to go, we as a Select Board limited what we would be willing to bid, and that amount was $700,000. Now, if it went to auction, which we did not want it to, which is why we were acting so fast, it would be as easy as just one person could bid $1 more, and then we were out of the game, which, of course, we did not want to have to take that chance. Someone might say, well, what's wrong with that? If we took a chance and lost it? Well, what's wrong with it is, we have no control on the individual or individuals who may get the building. So what's important about that? Whoever got the building can do whatever they want with it, which includes, they could tear it down, they could build apartments, they could raise the rent. And for those of you who may not know, our fire department is a tenant. We pay $23,000 a year for rent, and in the past 20 years, we've paid over $500,000 in rent for the building, which, you can see why, again, we did not want to take the chance in the auction bid. If it goes, in the building, and it generally could happen, where does our fire department go? We don't have any place. Kind of embarrassing when you think of it, a town our size, et cetera, and what's more important, them to find a place to live, to put their trucks, or get out on a call. It's a scary thought that could happen if the building were to, whatever they might want to do with it. And for some of you, please, don't kid yourself in thinking, well, maybe the building will still be around. The building, I tell you, is going one way or the other, whether it's to us, the high bidder, the high buyer, because quite simply put, the owner of the building simply just wants to get rid of it. So the building is not going to stay around as it is. So that's another thing we had to face. What is our future then in town? Excuse me. No town can stay stagnant. Taxes and change are sure things. For example, the demographics of our town, if you go back to 1960, since I mentioned it earlier, excuse me, the population of Hubbardston in 1960 was approximately 1,120 people. And in 2020, it had gone up to 4,328, and as of yesterday, when I looked it up, today it's 4,361. The point of all of that is, more and more people are moving into town, young families with children getting started, young families who live in a very high intellectual, technical world. They're using things that didn't exist in 1960. And the point I'm trying to make is, we have got to go from 1960 as a town, in a sense, up to 2024, because these same people who are moving here, they have different needs, different desires, different wants, and we need to move with them.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. At this point, thank you very much. Please give him, please give him a round of applause. Thank you very much. Thank you. At this, at this point, the, and the chair, the chair made an error and apologizes. I should have given you the time that is allotted for all members of the committee so that you know that this is not open-ended. Ms. Carrie Sacramone, if you can please come up to the podium, she is the Chair of the Public Safety Buildings Committee. She has five minutes. Thank you.
I have five minutes for an eight-minute speech, so I'm, I'm not a public speaker by trade, so I can see my daughter in the back wishing me good luck. My name's Carrie Sacramone. I live at 96 Hill Road. I am the chairperson for the Public Safety Building Committee. Thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening as we embark upon making such a critical vote. In my capacity as Chair of the Public Safety Building Committee, my goal tonight is to provide you with an overview of the committee's efforts leading up to this point and why our committee, above all other options, views this opportunity as one we cannot afford to pass up. First, though, I do want to thank, on behalf of our committee, and extend our gratitude to Nate for his remarkable efforts in bringing this opportunity to our attention while ensuring our committee had access to all the essential information required for a collective decision. Nate also worked diligently to disseminate relevant information to the town within a short period of time to be sure everyone was informed. I think in the time I've lived here, it is the best, and considering our, all the people here tonight, I think we did a great job of getting all the information out to everyone. To the Select Board, we appreciate all you've done to help move forward, help us move forward on this. We first began, we first met as a committee in July of 2023. We began by examining the town's long history of attempts to pass the Public Safety Building with discussions focused on understanding why past proposals had failed, including analyzing community feedback and the reluctance to invest in what had been described as overly extravagant designs. With these insights, we felt it necessary to start from scratch, complete our own due diligence in doing research, planning, and cost analysis, and to propose a solution that better meets the needs of the town, with the final goal being a proposal that would pass. That is our intent tonight. To ensure we accurately defined the requirements and avoided previous pitfalls, our first steps was to consult with communities that had successfully undertaken similar projects. We visited a variety of public safety buildings, Holden, Paxton, Holden, Paxton, Ashby, and Ashburnham, seeking to learn from their experiences regarding project timelines, costs, and current outcomes. This approach allowed us to gather valuable insights and identify effective, feasible solutions tailored to our own needs. These visits were crucial in helping us to determine the best practices that could be implemented in our own facilities while being mindful of costs and what we truly needed. Moreover, the chiefs we visited with shared success stories of how modernizing their stations had significantly reduced response times and improved the overall health and safety of their teams. This not only benefited the first responders but also the communities they served. Improved facilities meant quicker, more effective responsive to emergencies, ultimately saving more lives and property. Additionally, they emphasized the positive impact of improved working conditions on morale. This led to a more appealing department allowing for the recruitment of additional firefighters and police officers. As we reflected on these visits and visited our own facilities, it was brutally clear that the facilities used by Hubbardston's police, fire, and emergency services are outdated and no longer meet modern standards and are the same as they were 20 years ago. These buildings lack the necessary space, efficiency, and technology required for effective operations. Continued reliance on these outdated facilities poses significant risks to public safety, including potential delays in emergency response and compromised service quality and could result in higher costs in the future. The purchase of 48 Gardner Road will address a majority of these needs, providing the space, efficiency, and infrastructure required to meet today's public safety demands. We conducted in-depth discussions about our priorities weighing the concept of best versus better. Both chiefs agreed that we must focus on meeting essential needs rather than pursuing the highest state-of-the-art options. Their priority is to secure functional working conditions and ensure their departments, the building they are in, meet all necessary codes. To address these priorities, two committee members worked closely with both chiefs to develop a comprehensive list of needs focusing on fundamental requirements. Requirements were identified as either operational or administrative and priority on operations. Both chiefs were receptive to working together and will strive for joint use of administrative space where practical, mutually beneficial, and cost-effective. At the initial walkthrough of 48 Gardner Road, both agreed these needs can be implemented with the acquisition of the property and is the best-case scenario. How am I doing on time? In consideration of potential solutions, we looked at, which I think is also important because I know there were a lot of questions that came up about this. First, we looked at our own property at 40 Gardner Road. A minimum $20 million investment, primarily due to the need of comprehensive development beyond the existing well that's there. Building options discussed for the site included constructing a steel or prefabricated building with future expansion capabilities that would house just public safety. Additionally, we would need to approve shovel-ready plans upwards of $1 million that would have a greater tax impact just to get started. Moreover, grant funding opportunities for such a project are minimal. Yon's Auto presented some initial potential but faced several challenges. The facility's layout would make it difficult to accommodate the police department and the building would need extensive landscape construction to address slope issues. Furthermore, ground testing for the contamination due to years of auto storage would cost around $20,000. A study neither the town nor the current owner is prepared to fund. Consequently, this site is not a viable option. The Wayne Roy property on 62 was also considered. However, its location is too far from the town's epicenter, which would result in extended response time for emergency services reaching outer areas of Hubbardston. The proposed phase plan of 48 Gardner Road addresses many of the pitfalls associated with these alternatives. It offers a more strategic location, better suitability for accommodating both the fire department and police, and a more feasible financial plan. Consequently, none of the previously evaluated options effectively meet the town's needs as comprehensively as the redevelopment of 48 Gardner Road. How am I doing?
Over.
Want me to finish up?
Please.
In conclusion, to reiterate, the domino effect. The two pages are almost the same. I'll just get right to it. While our committee was tasked with the development of only a public safety building at 48 Gardner... And 48 Gardner Road does accomplish this. The caveat in this purchase is the domino effect it creates for the town. It has enough space to house town offices while still giving fire and police reasonable accommodations. The bottom line: It secures our fire department's home. It secures our current businesses a home for the remainder of their lease agreements. It secures a new home for our police department in future phases of the plan. It gives our town offices a central location all under one roof, opening up our library and senior center to grants they are not able to get with mixed-use facilities. It gives our plan more options for grants to assist with the funding of the project. Flexibility and options for the future. To put public safety facilities with town offices all in one place with a phased approach projected under $10 million solves more than the $20-plus million price tag of a new public safety building only. The phased approach moves us in the right direction for less costs while also resolving a host of town-building issues we've had for years. As a committee, we've done our research and due diligence. This opportunity is like finding a diamond in the rough. If we don't act on this, we will most likely never have a public safety building. Our fire department and local businesses may be in danger of losing their leases or incurring rental increases that our town can't afford. Then our police department will continue to handcuff people to the chairs. Thank you for your time this evening.
At this point, Chief Robert Hayes. Chief, again, I thought that this had already been decided among the presenters. You're scheduled for two minutes. We'll see what can happen with that. Chief Kutter, you're going to be following him also, two minutes. Ms. Barbera, Library Director, two minutes. You know, very good, thank you. Council on Aging Director Claudia Provenzal, two minutes. Chris Monroe and Noel. If needed, Planning Board Economic Development Committee, two minutes. And Seth Knight, Finance Committee, two minutes. Okay. So thank you, just to let you know what I had been provided with. Go ahead, Chief Hayes first, please. Of course, of course. You can yield.
I only have two minutes, so I'm going to make this quick. First of all, thank you for the applause, for the years of service for me and Captain Casey. Greatly appreciate it. Probably the last time I'm ever going to have 300-plus people applaud me, so appreciate it. Makes it a little extra special to be up here. I had a thing written out here, but Carrie did hit all those points. I've been the chief for 16 years. And just a correction to, I am still a town member. I've been here, live on 5 Adams Road, I've been here for 43 years. So I've been the chief for 16 years. I've been part of three different committees. And out of all those times, I think this is the best opportunity where the needs of various departments of the town can be met but also limiting the impact to the taxpayers. We've been at, you know, for the last 22 years at 48 Gardner Road. The current landlord, there is definitely deficiencies over the years in getting things taken care of there. So the extra money above the $700,000 to repair it would ensure that that space stays functional. And moreover, it would give us, like Carrie said, a space where we can actually expand in the future. If we get the building and fix it up, then in the future, the town can put more funding towards it and actually have a location where we can expand and meet the full needs of the fire department along with other town departments. I think it's a great opportunity with the least amount of impact to the taxpayers. And I think it gives it this chance to give the fire personnel, the department, the space that they need to do the vital job that they are required to do. So I'm in full support of it and I hope you strongly consider supporting it also. Thank you.
A minute ten. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Ryan Kutter. I'm the Chief of Police. This is my third year as your chief. I've been here for 20-plus years, though, with the department in various stages of my career. And I'd just like to say, you know, publicly, a thank you to my officers for the work that they do for all of you on a daily basis with the conditions that they have to deal with. Because we do not have a professional environment to work in. Some of the current downfalls of the station we have now is limited space and we don't have the ability to add on to it. We're in about an 1,800-square-foot space right now and we would probably come close to doubling that in this new building. There's a lack of privacy for our officers when they get ready for duty. They have to get dressed at their locker in a hallway, which is a public hallway in the building. Many of our spaces have multi-use and that's really not ideal. There is a lack of security in the building overall. And the building was never really intended to be a police station. Breezy Hill definitely wasn't either, but renovating it and putting some money into it, we could make it into what we need it to be. So I fully support this project. Everybody's really touched on the history of the building and all that stuff. I just wanted to come up here and say that I hope you will support us in this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
There's a lot of people in here. Okay. Chris Barbera, 17-year-old Princeton Road cutoff, the Library Director. I've been here for about 27, 26 years. I support the purchase of 48 Gardner Road. The purchase and subsequent phases will finally unite the town offices under one roof. And the library trustees will be able to expand the library into the basement of the building. This provides a number of advantages for the citizens of the town. The town's population has grown. In 1994, the population was 3,369. And today, I have to change this, it's 4,361. The library space is just over 2,100 square feet. Adding the basement would almost double our size and enable us to provide additional spaces to meet our growing population. Currently, the adult and young adult sections have limited seating areas for quiet reading. We also lack a study area for youth and meeting areas for the public. Our programming space is not ideal. Whenever we host a program, we have to close the children's room. The additional space in the basement of a library would allow us to address many of these issues. Accessing the library for some individuals is challenging. The main entrance granite stairs can be challenging for parents with strollers and for those with physical challenges. Having a ground-floor entrance would encourage them to visit again. In order to make the basement a functional library space, I should note that potential renovations may need to be done. I and the trustees would seek grant opportunities to help fund any renovations. Having the building strictly dedicated as a library opens up grant opportunities that the library in the past has been ineligible for due to the library and town offices sharing space in one building. The Massachusetts Public Library Construction Program grants, which is a matching grant, only permits work on library portions of the building. And as an aside, my husband was a Call firefighter earlier in his career here and I totally, that's yet another reason I support this. I think that the fire and the police really need this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh my goodness. This is amazing and I want to thank all my people for coming. I just threatened everybody they had to come. I've been here for 16 years, the Director for the Council on Aging. I've lived in town 50 years, almost. And I do want to say that I definitely am in support of this, the fire department, the police department, the town offices, and the senior center. And I just, it's not in my notes, but I just want to say this one thing. I've been here for so long and we've been fighting for so long for something better for the town. And this is the first time that the town has come together like a community. The police, the fire, us, the town offices, all working together. It's amazing and it's wonderful. Thank you, everyone. So I have the senior center. I'm a little nervous, can you tell? I have the senior center and space is a big concern. We would be able to take care of our seniors in a proper manner today and in the future with more space. We need space for the family members to talk with their mother or father, to our counseling director in private. We need to have space for seniors to help fill out important forms like fuel assistance and mass help. Our shine counselor could have a private area for them. We could have confidential health care, foot care, hearing tests. We could have blood pressure clinics. We could have a health fair. There is so much that we could do for our seniors. Forty percent of this population is seniors. It's time that we took a little look at us. We need your help and we would have many services for you. And we'd love to provide them for you. So thank you so much for coming and I appreciate the time to talk to you. Thank you.
Two quick updates. If you are a guest, that is, you are not a resident, you have not been given one of the colored cards, please sit in the bleachers closest to the front, okay? So please relocate there. That's especially important when we have the counters out to actually count votes. Mr. Monroe, two minutes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Christopher Monroe, Grimes Road, Chair of the Planning Board. I'm actually here to deliver a statement on behalf of the Planning Board. The Select Board and the Building Committee had reached out to us because they had received questions that were really outside the scope of what they did. So the Planning Board put together a statement. So if you'd allow me, I'd like to read it in the record. Dear Mr. Williams, On August 18th, 2024, the Planning Board met and discussed our position on the proposed project at 48 Gardner Road at the Select Board's request. The members of the Board were very familiar with the proposed project. After a discussion of the project and the long-term goals of the town, the Board voted unanimously to issue a statement that the Board believes this project is consistent with the goals and objectives previously approved by the Planning Board and the town's master plan and that the project is consistent with the Planning Board's long-term vision for the town. The Hubbardston Planning Board recognizes the project's potential impact on the town's quality of life and future economic development. The Board is dedicated to collaborating with businesses and the community to create opportunities for new businesses and develop a plan to retain existing businesses that preserves the character and identity of Hubbardston. We believe in a future for Hubbardston where it is a compelling place to live and work. The project at 48 Gardner Road is located in the commercial zoning district and could be constructed by right with no further site plan approval required. Hubbardston has a strategic focus on enhancing its economic landscape and protecting its residents. Numerous plans and reports, including the master plan and the Quabin Educational Municipal Partnership Recommendation Report, emphasize the importance of sustainable growth, infrastructure improvements, along with attracting diverse businesses. We cannot ignore that the world around us is changing and merely hope that our tax base will take care of itself. In particular, our recent master plan update calls for the consolidation of municipal services into shared facilities, Action SF 2.3, and prioritization of public safety facilities, Action SF 2.2. We expect the purchase of 48 Gardner Road to be a net positive to the community and in the long run, increase property values and enhance the town's quality of life. Investments in public safety facilities such as modern fire and police stations contribute to a secure environment, making Hubbardston an attractive location for both residents and businesses. These improvements not only boost property values but also enhance the overall impression of the town as a safe and thriving community. The Board expects the purchase of 48 Gardner Road to launch a review of how we look at commercial space in Hubbardston, a review that the Board believes is long overdue. To help take steps towards a thoughtfully planned future, the town has engaged a part-time planner to identify economic barriers planner to identify economic barriers and conflicts within the current zoning bylaws and practices. We look forward to working with that planner to explore grants and partnerships to fund economic development projects and zoning efforts to ensure a vibrant and resilient local community. On behalf of the Planning Board.
Thank you, Mr. Monroe. Mr. Knipe, please, two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you, Seth Knipe, 102 Old Princeton Road. I serve as the Chairman of the Finance Committee. Good evening, and thank you all for coming this evening. As other presenters have discussed, we are here to present an opportunity for the community to play a crucial role in moving a major project forward that will have significant impacts to many departments. Your involvement and support are crucial to the success of this endeavor. As Finance Committee Chairman, I'm here tonight to explain how our committee has reached a recommendation on these two articles. Since 2018, the town has been unwavering in its commitment to following best practices regarding debt management and financial responsibilities in the direction of past and current boards and elected officials. This steadfast commitment should reassure you of our dedication to prudent financial management. The highlighted section of the town management, debt management policy, which can be found on the town's website, the town will issue and manage debt obligations in such a manner to obtain the best long-term financial advantage and will limit the amount of debt to minimize the impact to taxpayers. Current debt financing will continue to fund capital improvements with a lifespan of greater than three years, and no such borrowing will be used to fund recurring annual expenses. The town aims to maintain a debt service line item in the annual budget between 4% and 5% of the town's operating budget. Currently, the town's debt payments have been decreasing over the last several years and currently comprise of just over 2% of the town's operating budget, as you can see in the graph. What would be targeted outstanding debt held by our community, if you want to know? A city or town needs to reinvest to keep the community thriving and growing continuously, supporting residents' needs, and keeping the community a safe place to live. By statute, the community's debt limit is equal to 5% of its most recent equalized valuation. As you can see, our debt is at 0.02% of the town's EQV. This shows that the town has not been investing in its own future. The overall objective of debt services within the community is that the items get paid off, as items get paid off, they are replaced with new projects and keep the debt service payments level, resulting in a stable tax rate. If approved tonight, Phase 1 of this project, including all current outstanding debt of the town, will look like this chart up here. The project timeline is to cover, this project timeline is to cover the bond anticipation note through the end of fiscal year 2027, with the rental income from the property resulting in a no-tax increase at this time. The plan is to return to this body to present the next phase of the project, including plans, building specifications, and the associated cost. The amount requested, including the outstanding balance voted tonight, would be combined into one debt exclusion, which we voted by town meeting at this floor and by ballot vote. So you would have another chance again in the future. Several factors contributed to a good bond rating in the community. One uses best practices in financial management, which we are doing. And the community is committed to maintaining and improving its infrastructure. At this time, I'd like to thank you for your consideration on these two articles.
Thank you, Mr. Knipe. Okay, so that is going to conclude the presentation as far as the Public Safety Building Committee. Please join me in thanking our fellow townsman for the time and effort that they have put into this. Please stand. Thank you. Okay, so at this point, this is where everyone has the opportunity to ask their questions or to make their statement. Again, the format is going to be, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, once you are recognized, and if I may, do you want to keep that there? Or what, is that okay on your end?
I can.
Okay. Isn't that a little bit more interesting than seeing the back of someone's head? Okay, maybe except for mine. Thank you. So we'll keep it there. Thank you. So we'll keep it there. So thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, my name is, state your first and last name, and give your home address. I will invite you to proceed, and then you will have 10 minutes, not more than 10 minutes. Please. Questioner, do you want to be recognized?
Yes, I'd like to be recognized.
There we go. Thank you very much. Please step forward.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Bella Caldera. I've been here 27 years. I live in 12 Simon Hill Road.
Please proceed.
As you drive about, sometimes you see people with flags, black flags with a blue line in the middle. That supposedly mean, back the blue. Well, when are you gonna back the blue? Back the blue tonight. If you ain't gonna do it tonight, it ain't gonna work, and you can't claim you back the blue. So now is the time to act. Let's back the blue tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. 29 seconds. Okay. Is there, is there anyone else who would like to address the warrant article? Anyone else who would like to address the article? Yes, ma'am, please step forward.
Mr. Moderator, hi. My name's Alice Livedall. I live on 96 Mount Jefferson Road, past Chair of the Planning Board. And I just wanted to say that I think it's really important to do this, and I think there are a lot of really good reasons that we're presented tonight, but just sort of hit them all again. We do need a central location. Those fire trucks have to reach every corner of the town, right? And so it needs to be in the center. This is a good location for that. The other location was good too, but we can't afford 20 million for a new building, right? So that's one point. I think the 700,000 is incredibly cheap for five acres, the plaza, and the barn. You can't build a house for 500,000. I do think it's a serious problem that the lease on that building is expired. If it goes to auction, what do we do with those fire trucks? Where do we house them, right? And I know that there's been a long time studying this issue in town. The whole five years I was chairman, it's really been kicked around. So this is, even though this is a quick meeting, it's to a long, a solution, good solution to a longstanding problem. And I agree with the other towns, even Princeton, which is trying to do this. Their tax, their price for a new building was 12 million. So I think this is the right approach, and I support it.
Mr. Moderator, town officials, first responders, Bill Shea, 51 Morgan Road.
Please proceed.
We, my family, and this is an important meeting. In fact, my wife said she wanted to be here even if the Red Sox weren't playing. We've been in town 51 years. We've seen the town grow, for the most part, in a very positive fashion. And in doing so, we've seen the facilities that serve the town not grow in the same fashion. We've been putting Band-Aids on the bleeding for a very long time, and it's time that we change all that. We've seen videos, we've heard descriptions of the facilities, but there's one adjective that has not been used, and that is deplorable. So we really need to do something about it, and I firmly encourage you to vote in a positive fashion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who would like to address the article?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Everybody hear me? I'm Susan Rain, 10 Williamsville Road.
Please proceed.
Some of you may know me from my brilliant career in public service, most recently on the Finance Committee, but previously on the Long Range Facilities Planning Committee back in 2013. The police and fire department facilities were in bad shape in 2013. Laws changed, needs changed, people changed, and then there was the wear and tear. Buildings cannot keep up without significant investment. You homeowners, you know what I'm talking about. At some point, maintenance alone is simply not enough. The problem back in 2013 was that we had outgrown our buildings, and in the process of outgrowing them, we had subjected them to more wear and tear than they were designed to handle when they were built decades before, when building codes were significantly different. There was then and is now no amount of maintenance that can cause Fire Station 1 to become large enough to house a standard fire engine. And purchasing custom fire engines to fit this building, that is legitimately a teardown, has been penny-wise and pound-foolish from both financial and public safety perspectives. The police station housed in the Slade Building, originally a kindergarten? Really? A building designed for teachers and five-year-olds? That station did not conform to existing requirements and could not conform to projected requirements 10 years ago. No amount of maintenance can equip it to have a holding facility. The only previous Band-Aid facilities move this town has made was to stuff some of the town offices in the library basement. All that did was eliminate years and years of possible grants to maintain and improve this jewel of a building. So to address these problems, the Long Range Facilities Planning Committee dug up the reports of its predecessors, all of which said the same things, and in 2015 proposed the construction of a new public safety building at an estimated cost then of under $8 million, a projected annual tax increase on the average homeowner of $217. That was rejected by the voters. And time has gone on and on and on, and matters are only getting worse. Now, this opportunity to purchase 48 Gardner Road for a public safety building and municipal office building purpose has presented itself. Perhaps it would be useful to know the backstory here. The owners intended to auction off the building and notified its tenants, including us, of their plan, inviting any inquiries. Make no mistake, this building will be sold whether we buy it or not. And who is more motivated to do right by the tenants and the town? Some rando buyer or us? For those of you concerned about our businesses, the tenants of this building are at greater risk if we do not purchase this than if we do. And as for our own risk, snap out of it. Our risk is high and getting higher. We can't stay where we are, and maintenance is insufficient to resurrect these buildings. It is only a matter of time before there is an event involving these buildings resulting in injury or death for which the town is held liable and for which we will all be morally culpable. An eight-figure new construction is off the table. Don't kid yourselves. This leaves only the opportunity before us to take an existing building and renovate it to suit our needs. This recycling and reuse of an existing asset that could otherwise fall into further ruin is exactly what we should be doing and reflects our town ethos and sensibilities. It is a win-win-win all the way around for the tenants, for the town, and for the taxpayers. I, for one, am disinterested in yet another committee regurgitating these reports and photos. I am sick about worrying about whether our first responders will say, screw it, and bail on us, or get hurt or worse. And I am tired of seeing more unhinged Facebook rants on this topic with no solutions offered. Don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. Let's do something. Let's do it now, right now, right here, tonight. Vote yes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, boards, committees. My name is Mike Foley. Some of you may know me from Facebook.
Excuse me, Mr. Foley, and your address again.
Mike Foley, 12 Pitchville Road.
Thank you, proceed.
I have been here 19 years. I've raised two kids here. Both of them are here to vote. They have said they are going to vote in the affirmative. They better. I would just like to reiterate what I have been saying on Facebook for a number of weeks. The committee, the board, we have worked incredibly hard. One of the main things that we all agreed on was this time, we are going to be as transparent as possible. We have flooded you with information. I don't know whether to apologize or say tough. What I do want to say is, this is probably our last good opportunity. There are no other buildings in Hubbardston that would offer us the ability to put police, fire, town in. This is a 19,000-square-foot building. It's huge inside. It's going to take us years just to figure out what to do with all the space. That's a good thing. Now, as someone who has dealt with health issues in the past, I don't want to wait that extra couple of minutes when something bad happens at home for a, for the fire department to have to go down, open up the door on the barn, not the fire station, the barn, hope that the door actually works and doesn't fall off on top of the apparatus. I want them in that apparatus within one minute and at my house within a couple. All of you do. If not for you, I hate to do this, I really do. I hate to do for the children, but it's our kids. It's our parents. It's our aunts, our uncles. We need the fire department to be there as soon as possible. Phase 2 will get us there. Phase 1, as we've said, has no tax impact. That should be, everyone should be voting for it just for that alone, right? I mean, all I hear on Facebook is, how much is this gonna cost me? We've shown you the numbers. Phase 1, no tax impact. Phase 2, very small tax impact. Phase 3, very, very small tax impact. For the amount of money that some people spend on coffee in a week, you can have a really nice facility with police, fire, and town offices. Think about this very seriously. I am incredibly encouraged that so many people have come here tonight. If, even if it doesn't pass, Hubbardston stood up and showed what their voice is. Please vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foley. Yes, sir. Second row, sorry. Second row first. You're next, sir. Mr. Foley, did you leave your, your voting card up by any chance? Nope, you haven't, okay.
Fine.
All right. That's fine.
Mr. Moderator.
Sure.
John Belkafini, 131 Gardner Road.
Please proceed. Please proceed.
Thank you. Seven years ago, I had a heart attack, and like I said, I live at 131 Gardner Road. It was a mild heart attack, but I didn't know what was going on, so me and my wife were waiting for the ambulance to show up. And it was 20 minutes, 30 minutes. We come to find out that the ambulance was out doing another call, and maybe at that time, there wasn't a second ambulance. I don't know. Rutland was dispatched to my home. I was brought to the hospital. Obviously, I did fine, I'm back. But obviously, and as a volunteer firefighter for the Town of Sutton 40 years ago, I can actually compare the condition of those facilities, both police and fire, to what we currently have now. So, obviously, I support this initiative, and thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Paul Sweeney, 40 Williamsville Road. I've been here 25 years.
Please proceed, Mr. Sweeney.
Oh, sorry, thank you.
That's okay.
And in 25 years, this town has really, really changed, except for the police and the fire. I don't understand it. We had one opportunity before, got voted down, yes, taxes were going up. I'm not for my taxes going up either. They're trying to keep everything at a minimal. I've heard all kinds of questions of, "What can you get for grants? When will it happen?" There's no foolproof situation. But you know what? We owe it to the town, we owe it to ourselves, and we owe it to the police department and the fire department to have better facilities, to be able to be capable of doing stuff. My God, if you haven't been in the police station, when they lock somebody up, they lock them to a bench. If they get two people, I think they lock them to the railing outside. Honestly. Then they have to transport them to Rutland. We don't have the facility. You know, if you watched Andy Griffith Show, okay? They had a jail. We don't even have a jail. And that's how many years ago? I really feel that if this doesn't go through, we're not thinking of anything but ourselves, we're not thinking of having them better conditions and working for us, it's kind of shameful. So I'm hoping that everybody really looks at things and says, "Yeah, we need to do this. We owe it. We owe it to the town, we owe it to the personnel here that go out on a limb every day of the week." Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Jennifer Williams. I'm from 98 Old Princeton Road.
Please proceed.
Thank you. So I had, I watched those movies, those videos last night of our police and our fire department, and it is, as far as I'm concerned, disgraceful and an embarrassment that these wonderful firefighters, wonderful policemen are subjected to these conditions and expected to do a good job and expected to want to stay in Hubbardston is just unbelievable to me. So I think this is incredibly important that we get this thing done and get us to where we need to be. Now, my poor husband Jeff, or I should say, my poor self, I've been listening to his speech the last few nights, and I've had questions and questions and questions. And one question I didn't get to ask him, and I apologize for this question because I'm a CPA, but there must be some relationship to, a thousand new people in the town means two more firefighters. There must be some sort of ratio there. To what extent does this building grow with us? I heard reasonable accommodation. To what extent can we get another 2,000 residents into Hubbardston and still have the ability to have wonderful conditions for our firefighters, our public people, and our policemen?
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Chief, would you be able to answer that?
Not really.
Okay. Honesty is refreshing, yes.
But, yeah, NFPA does have a formula for X amount of population. You're supposed to have X amount of firefighters that are on hand. If it goes up by 2,000, I don't think that, that may be adding a couple extra firefighters. So I think like Mr. Foley said, there's 19,000 square feet there, there's plenty of room. We're more focused on the phase one, but phase two is still not talked about, so I don't know what the actual, like, built fire station power that would be. But we would be adding space, we would be adding apparatus bays, so that the fire apparatus in the center of town would come up to Breezy Hills, so we would not have to travel between stations when there's a call, which would cut our response times for fire calls down by two or three minutes. So, yeah, there is a formula there, but I don't have it off the top of my head, but...
It provides us more space to grow our facilities.
Yes, it would have the facilities, it would be planned in mind for eventually someday we might actually have 24-hour coverage. Right now, we have, there's five of us that are full-time, and then there's 11 that are on-call. We cover, the full-time staff covers 7:00, 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 o'clock at night, Monday through, yeah, Monday through Saturday. On Sunday, we have two call guys that cover the day shift, but then after 10:00, we're responding from home. Somewhere down the line, if the town keeps growing and then the volume of calls increases, then there would have to be to look at putting full-time people in the station. This space would be designed to have that in mind for future use.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Rebecca Feta Place, 155 Williamsville.
Please proceed.
I'm going to say what we're all thinking. I think we've heard it all. Let's vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Matt Castriata, 4 Parsons Road. And I'll be brief because I know everybody wants to vote. I have a newspaper article here from 1973, back when Tom Weeding and Tom Fathers voted to spend $153,000 to build a Slade Building, which, as you heard, was designed for school. Since then, it's been a police station, town offices, senior center. For those of you who think government should be run like a business, wow, what a return on an investment. 51 years, $153,000. Tom Weeding and the Tom Fathers in 1973 did the right thing. They made a very wise decision. Let's do the same thing tonight. This is a no-brainer. The return on investment is huge for us, our children, our grandchildren. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. John Solivar, 47 New Templeton Road.
Please proceed.
Thank you. So a couple of things that really, I don't know if they just need some sort of clarity or deeper transparency, but some of the things that we haven't really talked about or information that really hasn't been clear to me is what we're actually going to do with the businesses that are there. I know there's been inferences made that they'll be better off once the town actually takes over the building, but my concern is that, things that I've heard directly are that when there's been the walkthroughs, that people are talking about going into those businesses and actually restructuring them for the purposes of the town. So that doesn't actually, for me, lead to a lot of confidence relevant to what is actually going to happen to those businesses in the long term, and what is the plan once those businesses and their leases run out? Is there going to be some sort of help in town that actually provides them with supports to actually stay located here and support their services in this community? The other questions that I do have that have come up from the presentations that I've heard are really relevant to the language that's actually been presented here, is that we're talking about a majority of the services that are offered here in town. What happens to those things that we actually have to still address, and what will happen with the existing buildings once they close down? Will they still be operational for other types of supports or services in town as well? And the last thing that I'd like to seek better clarity on is that if there is an auction that was proposed or infranced, I don't hear that there's actually an auction date or that there were considerations relevant to the fact that if we have a bid into the town, and we're talking about other people scooping in and actually buying the property, why isn't that actually happening now if somebody could actually approach the current owner and actually offer, say, whatever it is, over $700,000 that would entice the property to be sold? So again, those are just things that I'm looking for clarity on. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Monroe, please.
Mr. Moderator, Heather Monroe, 59 Grimes Road.
Please proceed.
My name is Heather Monroe. I'm also a member of the Public Safety Building Committee as the liaison from the Select Board. So I'm going to do my best to answer these three, and any that I miss, I'm sure Nate will just jump in for me right in the middle. All right, so the first one, we've had a lot of discussion amongst the Select Board, amongst the Public Safety Building Committee, and many times jointly. As was stated earlier, we've had several joint meetings, I think, over the past several weeks. This has been our main engagement for most of us, multiple times a week, it seems. So the concern with the economic development and the current businesses we have is real. We have very few businesses in town, and a lot of folks are very concerned that a good portion of them are located at Breezy Hills. Nate has done an amazing job reaching out to the current tenants at Breezy Hills, and I've actually accompanied him with two of the visits to two of the different tenants there, one being the groomers and one being the vet. We wanted to make sure the tenants knew what was happening and that we were getting involved. So even at the very beginning of the conversations about the purchase and sale agreement, we wanted to loop them in to let them know. It was a very big concern for both the Select Board members as well as the Public Safety Building Committee members, that we continued working and having good relationships with the tenants and also kept them in the building as long as we can. As was just stated earlier, phase two and phase three are the ones where we would start looking at moving forward with places that are not, or spaces that are currently occupied. In the meantime, the idea is to allow the tenants to at least initially start with finishing their tenancy, which I think is five, three, and two. The vet, I believe, is there for five years on their lease, the groomer is there for two, and then the yoga instructor is there for three, all over the place. We wanted to make sure that they had a spot. The next thing that's really important is where do they go once we start looking at those locations to start building the police side and the fire side and getting more in-depth with the town offices? Well, we've been looking for a long time about how do we continue to advance economic development in the town, and how do we bring businesses in? Well, the first step, and we've discussed this in our meetings as well, is to really start with the zoning, right? We can't put things or businesses in places if we're not zoned for it. And this is something that's been a passion of the Planning Board, a passion of the Economic Development Committee, and it's part of the goal we have with pursuing the part-time planner that the Planning Board Chair mentioned earlier, and that's come up at some of the past meetings, most recently the Select Board, when we approved that direction, is to really look at the town the way it is now, the way it's going to be in the future, and how do we start doing the planning for this? How do we make it so that we are business-friendly and that we can invite businesses in? If we have no places for businesses to go because we have no zoning for them, they're never going to come and never going to want to stay. We also want to make sure we maintain those relationships. One of the properties that was mentioned, I believe, is 40 Gardner Road. So it was on the other side, it was the initial piece of property that we acquired with the intent to, at some point, put a COA and then eventually put a Public Safety Building Committee or complex on that property. Well, the idea is to look and pursue what the options may be once we fix the zoning to be able to go for some funding and go for some partnership opportunities with the state to develop that property in some capacity for business and economic development. Right now, in the state's eyes, you have housing, you also have economic development. This is a key priority to our state government right now. This is the opportunity to start working with them and to go after the funds that are available and start making those partnerships and opening those spaces. That's the plan for working with the tenants who are currently at Breezy Hill. Work with them, keep them as partners in this, keep them informed every step of the way, work with them on where we go from here. In the meantime, work with Planning Board and Economic Development Committee and the part-time planner on zoning, informing all of you what those changes need to look like to be able to allow for the businesses to come in, and then coming up with a plan and developing how to start developing those other properties. The second piece, I think, was the status of the buildings. So if the town hall offices move out of the bottom of the library, the library director has already told us, that gives them the opportunity to actually take over all of the space for the library. So the library is not abandoned. If anything, it actually can be cared for more because more funding will be available for them to go forward and not only make the improvements that are so necessary, but also build and move us into the future with that building. The Slade Building, once the town offices are out of the Slade Building and the police department eventually moves out of the Slade Building, the COA can expand. Years ago, they tried to get a new COA, and it wasn't successful. This gives them the opportunity. They now have a beautiful patio area on the back that's being developed. This allows this to be their permanent home and really to take ownership of that space and make something wonderful for everyone. The last, let's see, we have the fire station, the barn. That point, we've brought up a couple of times, and many folks have told us that we needed to have an answer to that question, and we don't yet, right? We're at the very beginning of this. It was stated a number of times tonight, this was not originally our intent about two and a half months ago, that we were going to be here this evening talking about this project. It happened, it came up. We've started looking at what the possibilities could be for that barn, you know? Is it a suitable structure? Can we put anything in it eventually? Is it something that we can use as historical purposes? Is it something we could rent out? Is it something we could use as really necessary commercial space? What can we do with it? We don't know the answer. Part of this project is to look at some other alternatives for these places, and how do we continue moving forward? And that's part of it. What do we do with this location? The last question I think that came up was about the auction. So when we got notice of the potential auction, Nate reached out, we've done a lot of work with the owners, a lot of work with the person who had put themselves forward as the auctioneer to try to get them to put a hold on the auction, and we have a... You're already jumping in?
Yeah.
But he's doing so well.
Good evening. Good evening. Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Nathan Boudreau, you can call me Nate, and I have the honor and privilege of serving you as your town administrator. I've been here about a year and a half now. Thank you.
Please proceed.
I would be remiss not to mention to this large of a crowd, this one fun little button on the Town of Hubbardston website. It says, "Volunteer." You should all go and click it and get involved because now we know you're listening. It is an honor to see this many people here tonight, and again, I'm sorry about the robo-calls and the text messages and the Facebook Lives and the Google Meets, but it worked, and I'm very proud to see this many people here today, all of my bosses. Kind of weird, it's like an interview. But, thank you. But on June 13th, Chief Robert Hayes came walking into my office and said, "Nate, I don't really know what to do. The building's going to go up for auction." I wasn't listening to Chief Hayes anymore, I was off to the races. And from that moment on, I began working with the Realtor who came to the Select Board meeting the next day. There's a nice email, do a public records request on it, there's an email that says, "Confidential, 48 Gardner Road." I sound like a kid in a candy store telling the Select Board that we need to meet. So there was no, no, no prior discussion of this, there was no conversations. This came to us out of the blue, and me being, I'm sorry, but the natural-born hustler that I am, I just ran with it. I was on the phone with the Realtor, on the phone with the owner. We ended up talking them out of having the auction, and that was hard. It was very hard. They wanted to have the auction. To speak about the businesses and the impact, yes, we're going to work with them. I want to see them in there for five-plus years, whatever, however long it takes this community to figure out what they want to do. Phase two, yes, we don't know a lot about it right now, but the goal and intention is to have a community discussion. You are all here tonight, we want to know your... You are all here tonight, we want to know your opinion. Tonight goes through, the Public Safety Committee has not done their work, they're just starting their work. We are going to bring an engineer involved, we are going to be able to take that building and really make it ours in partnership with the businesses. And I know we keep alluding to, oh, it would be something that they wouldn't be able to do if someone else came in and bought this building. Yes, if John Doe LLC came in and made a ridiculous bid at an auction that is currently not scheduled but would be scheduled starting tomorrow, there was a website up, it was July 18th, that was the date, there was a website up because there were a number of days where they didn't know if they wanted to do work with the town. They said, you had the opportunity in 2004, we can make a bunch of money. They started around $900,000, I started around $600,000. Carrie, the Chair of the Public Safety Building Committee, worked right there with me on speakerphone. It was great, she's going, no, 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 lower, lower. Like, but we ended up striking a deal with the tandons at $700,000 and we were off to the races. It was approved by the Select Board, the Finance Committee, the Public Safety Building Committee, but long and short, and I'm kind of rambling on at this point, but I hope to get the opportunity to work with you to figure out what Phase Two is. That's why we don't know. It hasn't been designed yet, and this community is, are the people that are going to design it. So thank you, I hope you will support this project this evening, it was a pleasure putting it all together, and I appreciate you coming out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boudreau. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jassy Bratko, 28 High Street.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Well, the risk of probably ending up being the most hated person in town here, and I realize it's an awful lot of support for this, I just want to point out some of the things that I have real concerns about. First and foremost, we are displacing businesses. We are definitely displacing businesses. Yes, the town says we want to work with them, but those businesses are going to be displaced. There's no guarantee if someone else buys this building, those businesses will be displaced, but they are. And they provide a wonderful service for a lot of people in this town. I'm really, really concerned with the fact that we have that parcel of land on Route 68, 40 Gardner Road, I believe it is, that the town has already invested thousands, tens of thousands of dollars in, putting in a well, designing a public safety building. That is all going to go down the drain. Money that the town has already spent that is going to go down the drain, it's not going to be used. I've heard it said that that land could potentially be used for commercial land. Well, according to the deed, no, it cannot. If that is not used for municipal purposes, then it reverts back to DCR. Now, maybe DCR will change that, but I'm pretty familiar with DCR and they're pretty much sticklers when it comes to agreements that they make. So one of my main concerns, and I've heard it over and over and over again tonight, we don't know what Phase Two is going to be. Phase One, we're voting on tonight, is the $1.5 million to do initial repairs on the building. A building that has been neglected for many, many years, has holes in its roof, holes in its siding. I've watched the videos, I've watched all the meetings, I've asked a lot of questions. I watched the inspection report last night. Even after an inspection, we don't know what's under that leaky roof or under those leaky windows. Now, we're being told that this is only going to cost us $9 million, but we don't know, as we've just this second been told, what it is that we want. Trust me, I, well, don't trust me, but let me tell you, I am not against a public safety building. My son is a police officer, my daughter-in-law is a firefighter, I know full well the importance of having safe facilities for our first responders. It's vital. I have voted for a public safety building before, but I am really concerned that this is going to be a money pit. What we all are saying here tonight is going to be a really cheap fix. I am very concerned that actually it's going to end up costing us a lot more in the long run, and we are going to lose businesses that provide a wonderful service. We're not even talking now about all the additional maintenance costs in maintaining a massive, great building, heating it, cooling it, much more space than we actually need in addition to the Slade Building. And yet, we're still being told that we can't meet our budget needs and that we still need the two and a half override. I'm really concerned about this. And I realize it's an awful lot of support here, it's not that I don't support the Fire Department and the police, I absolutely do. I voted for that in the past, and I will vote for a new facility again. But we've, we've used buildings that were not purpose-built in the past, and it's ended up not working well for the town. Let's build a building for our first responders that is purpose-built for once. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Boudreau.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. First and foremost, I would like to thank Mrs. Bratko for her work on the Curtis Recreational Field and with the CPA over many years. Jassy has done a lot of good work, in her opinion, carries a lot of weight. However, on this current issue, I believe she is mistaken. As you talk about a leaky roof, there would not be a leaky roof, there would be a new roof. You talk about drafty windows, there would not be drafty windows, there would be new windows. We already have an accepted bid for $479,000 to do the work, not to quote out the work, not to think about the work, to do the work. We did a extensive procurement process and we have somebody all lined up. It can, if this goes tonight, I can start lining it up tomorrow. And when it comes to the land across the street from the Curtis Rec Field, 21 Gardner Road, yes, it does currently have a deed restriction, but that deed is for general municipal purposes. That deed does not say must be senior center with septic, must be public safety building, it is general municipal, general municipal purpose. And it is my belief that any attorney worth their weight would be able to fight that commercial development is general municipal purpose, senior and affordable housing is general municipal purpose. Hell, let's get a pickleball court. It'll be whatever you guys want to do, but we will ensure that it is general municipal purpose. And that's a fight that myself and the, and the people on these boards are willing to take up. Like, absolutely. If we can't do it, there are opportunities to land swap with DCR, there are opportunities to buy things out from DCR, there are plenty of opportunities. As Select Board Member Monroe had said, we have an opportunity here because the state is really, really pushing housing and economic development. There is a high probability that we become an MBTA community. I am very, I don't love it, it's awful, I don't want to be an MBTA community, but if the tea came to Gardner, we would need to look into not housing to build, but housing to zone, and potentially that's something we could put there. So I do not believe this deed restriction holds us back, I believe it opens up endless opportunity. This is simply the first domino in a, in a domino effect. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boudreau. Someone else to speak to the article? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Order, folks, please. Name and address.
Donna Russell, 20th Street Road. I just want to speak to a few things. I actually patronize at least one of the businesses that a lot of people are concerned of, and sure, I am not really thrilled with the fact that someday she may move, but, but I can always follow her if she's not too far, or I can find another, I go to the groomers, and I can find another groomer, even though I wish she didn't have to potentially leave. But, but I have to look within myself and say, is it more important that my groomer stays there so my town loses out on the opportunity to serve every resident in this town with increased fire and increased police? And unfortunately, even though I don't want them to leave, and business is business, sometimes things change, but, but I have to look and say, what is best for this town and what is best for me and my family and all the residents? So I am 100%, 1,000% for this, and unfortunately, there always might be some small casualties when a town is growing and they're trying to improve themselves and attract other businesses commercially, as Nate has alluded to, and the town and the 100% of all the population here, for me, they have to come first. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else to address the article? Anyone else to address the article? The Chair sees none. At this point, the Chair is going to direct the two counters to please come forward and just hold off before you start counting, please. Voters, if you are on the bleachers, if you can please move over either this section or that section, those of you who are in the middle, if you can decide one way or another where you want to stand, please. Non-voters who are present, if you can please make your way to the bleachers in the front. Okay. Mr. Kresge. Bella, you're all set? Please take your count. Of the section, take care of us in front as well, who are residents. This is not a vote, this is a count. And just to make everyone aware, the last number that the Chair received was 374 present. So we'll just see what, or where we are count-wise. I think you're all set.
Currently the meat, so it's been like so long. Usually there's three in a day. It used to be four, but this number's shaken, and now the numbers are increasing, so we need to add back four. The number's on the rise.
Okay, so again, just to make you aware of what is going on, for the sake of transparency, the Chair wanted to make sure that there was a count so we, we know what we're, what we're looking at, okay? And that number is 372 present. So we have only lost two, which is amazing. Okay. So at, at this point, at this point, this is going to just take a couple of minutes. All those in favor of the article, please signify by raising your card, and please keep your card raised. Please keep your card raised.
It's very orange. It's very orange.
All right, folks, thank you very much. You may lower your cards, you may lower your cards. Okay, thank you. Zeroed out? Thank you. Okay, thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card, and please keep your cards raised for the counters. Thank you. Thank you. All right. So the result of the, the vote is as follows, the two-thirds needed is 248, so that's the, that's the target. The result of the vote is as follows, there are 339 in the affirmative and 33 in the negative, and the article passes. Article Two. I move that the town vote pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a Half, to amend the General Bylaws, Chapter Four, Section Six, Departmental Revolving Funds by adding a new revolving fund for the property located at 48 Gardner Road for the purpose of managing tenant rent and associated expenditures to authorize the Town Administrator to expend from such funds for property maintenance, utilities, repairs, and other related expenses to set the total amount that may be expended from such fund at $125,000 annually and to authorize the Town Administrator to provide an annual report of the fund's activities to the Select Board and Finance Committee. Moved by Ms. Young, seconded by Mr. Walker. Is there any discussion on Article Two? Any discussion on Article Two? Such a surprise, the Chair sees none. All in favor of Article Two, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you, please lower them. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. Opposed, one, two, 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 and there are two opposed, three. There are three opposed, Madam Clerk, Article Two passes. At this point, at this point, it is 9:25 PM and the Chair declares the special town meeting adjourned. Thank you for coming.